We're gonna get started. Thank you for the additional couple minutes. We now reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. And can I have a board member certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Ian, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move.
Go ahead.
Kim, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Letting it go.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Ian, I will turn it over to Dr. Heron for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Friday, April 26th, the Division successfully hosted its first kindergarten registration family fest with approximately 400 attendees. Throughout this event, the Division has welcomed nearly 100 additional incoming kindergarten students compared to the same timeframe last year. Thank you to all the volunteers, staff members, and local businesses and organizations who supported this event and welcomed our newest families. Last Friday, we welcomed Dr. Coons, Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction, Dr. Reilly, Chief of Staff, and Ms. Cooper, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, from the VDOE to WJCC Schools to see the great work going on in our schools. The group visited two schools, Claryburg Baker Elementary and Jamestown High School, where students and staff shared their wonderful accomplishments. You can read more about the visit on wjccschools.org. This week, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. Our teachers are not only our educators, they are mentors, supporters, and key advocates who nurture our students' abilities to explore and achieve. They create dynamic environments that go beyond traditional learning, encouraging every student to pursue their dreams. Let's make this week a memorable one for the teachers who inspire us all year long. Teachers, we appreciate you. Tomorrow is School Nurses Day, a time to recognize the vital role our school nurses play in maintaining a healthy school environment. They do much more than distribute Band-Aids and ice packs. They are at the forefront of managing medical needs, administering daily medications, and more. We are profoundly grateful for their dedication to the health and well-being of our school community, not just on School Nurse Day, but every day. Thank you so much, WJCC nurses. And finally, the Division has once again been recognized for its excellence in music education, earning the Best Communities for Music Education title from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. This recognition, which marks the Division's ninth consecutive year of achieving this honor, highlights our consistent commitment to providing comprehensive music education to all students. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. There's a number of exciting items this week. I believe Mrs. Chen has a report.
Yes, I'm just gonna give a brief report. Mr. Riffle and I attended the Student Advisory Committee meeting on April 24th at Warhol High School. And Courtney Monpoint is here in person, so I wanted to thank you in person for leading us, as well as our amazing student participants representing all the high schools and a representative from each of the grades. So just wanted to shout out to those students. Thank you for participating. And we are looking for new members for the new year coming up. And Mr. Riffle and I are very excited to continue to be part of the Student Advisory Committee. The students, for our last meeting, we engaged in an activity. And it was a one-word activity, so I'll just briefly let everybody know some of these inspiring words that the students came up with, thinking about the future and one word to describe what they would like to see in WJCC schools. So creativity, inclusion, engagement, excellence, diligence, unity, storytelling, and exploration. Those were just a few of the words that were shared. So, yeah, that's my report.
Ms. Chen, and thank you to you and Mr. Riffle for your continued service on that committee.
Did you want to add anything?
I just think it's a great platform for our students to kind of give us kind of raw, their unfiltered kind of, how's it going in school? You know, because I'm not sitting there with them. So, Miss, I really appreciate, you know, I mean, Miss has kids and I don't have kids, but it's good to hear from our students in ways that aren't just a school visit or, you know, what they're working on and stuff. So it's good to hear. So I appreciate our time there.
Thank you.
Also, Dr. Warhol is also there. She just wasn't at the last.
Yes, of course, yes.
Are there any other board member reports that come to mind? No? All right, we will move on to proposed agenda items. Item 5.01, Review Budget Transfer Request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Ms. Ewing is going to bring us a budget request transfer item. Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This agenda item for your consideration is a budget transfer of $500,000 from instructional salaries and benefits to operations and maintenance for utility costs. Utility costs for this school year have increased by approximately 16% as compared to last year for July through March. Current estimates for the last quarter indicate that an additional $500,000 will be needed to finish out the school year. Funds are available within the instructional area due to unfilled positions over the course of the year. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any question, Mr. Riffle?
What specific instruction positions are we talking about that aren't using their funds?
I don't have the current vacancy list, but I know over the course of the year, there's been several teacher positions. I don't know if Mr. Baker can provide any more insight.
Correct. There's obviously several teacher positions. There's instructional aides, there's bus drivers. We have a variety of positions.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Miss? Right. And we will move on to item 5.02, Review Revisions to the 2024-25 School Year Calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ford is going to present some potential revisions for the elementary teachers in this year's calendar, next year's calendar, sorry. Ms. Ford.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, I am presenting a recommendation to revise the 2024-2025 elementary school calendar in response to the unprecedented amount of professional learning and training that will be required of our elementary school teachers next school year. The Virginia Literacy Act, which will be in full effect next school year, will require teachers to complete training for evidence-based literacy instruction, training to administer and analyze the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening Assessment, and implement an approved core literacy curriculum, all aligned to the new standards of English, standards of learning for English. An intentional professional learning and collaboration plan has been developed to ensure WJCC teachers connect the Virginia Literacy Act training for evidence-based literacy instruction to the benchmark advanced curriculum materials, preparing our teachers to affect positive outcomes for our students. The implementation of the new math standards will require teachers to understand the new SOLs and the revised units of instruction and assessments. Teachers will learn and deliver instruction for a third set of newly revised SOLs, those for history and social science. And although the computer science standards are not yet revised, classroom teachers are responsible for teaching computer science skills and should receive professional learning support to integrate the computer science skills with the core subjects they teach. We will offer elementary teachers summer professional learning sessions to begin addressing the training and professional learning requirements. We also have outlined the scope of the elementary professional learning and training with our principals and have sought their input for how we might increase collaboration, learning, and planning time. This afternoon, we recommend revising the 2024-25 elementary school calendar to change three days to elementary student holidays for K-5 students and make those days CLP days for the elementary teachers. If this calendar change is approved, we will still meet the 990 instructional hours minimum requirement by the Standards of Quality and WJCC Policy IC school year. The existing CLP time allotted for classroom elementary teachers next year will support only a fraction of the professional learning and training they need to learn, process, and apply the new requirements to their teaching practices. We appreciate your consideration of our recommendation to revise the 2024-25 school calendar. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Are there any questions from board members? No eye contact, so I think that's a no.
Oh, I had a.
Mrs. Hunley, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. So when I was looking at this at home, I didn't see the little, for some reason, I didn't get the little dotted box. So when the marking period ends or starts, and I know teachers need time to work on report cards and things like that, is that gonna be part, is that in addition to the PDs, or?
So typically on a CLP day, we split that day between time allotted to Division-provided or school-based professional learning. So typically, no more than three hours. And then the balance of the day is dedicated to teachers for completing grading, report cards, collaborative planning, whatever is demanding their attention at that time.
Okay, so since I don't see the marking period, that hexagon shape, is that?
Is this aligned with?
With the workday. Is it aligned before grades, that's all? Because I know we got a lot of emails about that.
I think Dr. Keever may have a response to that.
Yeah, Ms. Hunley, the three days that are being proposed are not aligned with end of marking period. The days that are currently in the calendar for all teachers are generally aligned to the end of a marking period. So for instance, if you look at November 4th and 5th, those days were designated as parent conference days. We've done that this year. The end of that marking period, marking period one, is likely to be November 1st. Does that make sense?
Yes, but where's the workday?
Well, the workday, there is a partial part of November 4th and a partial part of November 5th that would be utilized as days to finalize grades and get those reported in, so report cards can be generated. In fact, the grading window is somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to 10 days, allowing teachers an opportunity to enter grades and get things accomplished preceding the close of the marking period. And it would be our hope, also, that teachers on a weekly basis are entering grades into the student information system so as to be able to effectively communicate with parents and students in terms of progress.
Okay.
Ms. Chen? I was just curious and wanted some clarification. So this is just a recommendation for this year, given the additional professional development?
Yes, ma'am, the Virginia Literacy Act.
Specifically just for our elementary school teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any consideration for making some of them full for all teachers? I'm just thinking about the students that are gonna be at home. Because typically, typically, we don't give student holiday for just K through five, right? Where the older siblings are still going to school. You don't know if there's any, like, negative impact, or if that's sort of beyond our purview here. I mean, I totally agree with the need for teachers to have time. That's, that makes sense.
I think we would hope to publish this if approved by the board as soon as possible so parents can make arrangements for children. This is a very exceptional year, why it's just elementary. Lots of additional training. The good news is, we believe in the training that's going to have an impact on literacy scores. But we want to make valuable time for teachers to really be familiar with the core instructional materials and the practices and everything else, and to actually take some of the training. So it is an exceptional year. We don't normally split things up at all. And we always stick to the 180. But this, this year, we really feel we want to set teachers at the elementary level up for success because of the incredible amount of expectations placed upon them.
Right.
Would it be possible to get a, this is kind of a chaotic calendar, to be honest, to look at? Would it be possible to get one that, if I was an employee here, how would it look? You know, so I can, I just can't really follow this, small boxes, and they're like stars. They don't really tell the marking periods. Can we get a calendar that's suggested to us that has this information included? It's just not very organized. It just has three dates.
So, two, couple, couple thoughts there, Mr. Riffle. We have not generally or always included the marking periods on the academic calendar. And what you're looking at, I'm not sure if you're looking at the file in Board Docs? Because the file in Board Docs actually has a PDF version of both calendars, like both first semester and second semester, which then gives you a sense of the full academic year laid out.
Yes, it's the same thing on the slide. It doesn't have marking periods on it.
That's, that's right. We typically do not publish the marking periods on the academic calendar for a couple of reasons. The marking period dates are actually now still being determined based on work with technology and schools. Generally, we publish the marking period end and grade entry window over the course of the summer.
So this calendar is really the academic calendar mainly for families and students. But it also sets in place the days for teachers as well, but not how those days will be used, because that's an internal function. But this is so that families can plan ahead and be aware of the days when students won't be in school next year.
And this obviously isn't the full calendar. It doesn't even show all the months. So this is a, this is just highlighting the changes that we're talking about.
That's right.
It's not showing all of the markings that a published calendar would have on it.
The full calendar is included without the marking period dates within Board Docs as a separate attachment.
Okay.
And that's the similar calendar that we've used for the last five or six years in terms of communicating with the community when school starts, when there are holidays, et cetera.
Right, so maybe there's something, another attachment that will be more of what you're looking for?
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know. Have you ever looked at William Mary's academic calendar? It's like, just words. Like, I don't really need shapes and things. Like, could you just make it less? Like, I just want to see it. Like, I'm looking at all of these, and I'm just trying to, like, I have to vote on this next, like, two weeks from now. You know, I'm trying to, I don't want to see all of it as an employee and a parent.
Well, you just need to vote on whether we're going to add these three dates.
I understand.
Do you have questions about these?
I would like to, I would like to see those three dates incorporated in both of those calendars. That's what I'm asking for. And I know that they're not there right now, so.
Well, I would contend, Mr. Riffle, that on the full draft sample on September 16th, there is an indication around September 16th that that should be a student holiday K-5, if what we have uploaded matches what I'm describing. So we believe that we are providing for you the full academic calendar for '24-'25. We are, we are not intending through this agenda item to provide the board with marking period information or even specifics around the exact things that are occurring during the CLP days.
Okay.
Do you have a, do you have a specific concern that it's, that it's, that these dates are coinciding with something else, or is it?
No, I just want to see, like, you mentioned it, it says various report cards in like a tiny little box. So those are on the calendar. There's interim reports not on the calendar. Like, this is what I'm saying. Like, there's, there's a whole legend down there. It's not being utilized.
That's really for illustrative purposes. Once we fill in those dates, we will add those to the calendar. But it's, it's, from our perspective administratively, it is not an item for the board to vote on in terms of when report cards might be released. What is, what is appropriate relative to the 180 days or the 990 instructional hours when school ends, when school begins?
So the part that we're approving is that we won't actually, for elementary, we will not actually have 180 days of school, but we will still meet the requirement of 990 hours. And so that's kind of the piece that we are approving or not approving, depending on how you feel about that.
I'm gonna move on at this point, so it's gonna be clear.
Okay, are there any other questions?
This may not be the time or place, but how many hours are we talking about to educate the teachers in the new learning, in the new reading program?
Well, over the course of all of the professional learning and training they need, we are estimating teachers will need anywhere from 50 to 70 hours of training. So that includes the Virginia Literacy Act modules.
That's what, that's the specific that I was asking for.
Yes, ma'am.
But I mean, it's included in those 70 hours.
Yes, ma'am.
And if these three dates aren't approved, then what happens?
That is going to have a significant impact on the time that we have to follow up with that training, to help our teachers process, to give them time with their new curriculum materials, to work together, to work with our reading specialist in our building. So with the 18 additional hours, if the board were to approve that change to the calendar, that would bring our time for professional learning for teachers to 51 hours.
And Dr. Cavassos, as part of that, there are required modules for every teacher to take in implementing the Literacy Act. And so that's part of it. There's a lot coming from the VDOE. And it'll be excellent training, and we want it, and it's necessary, and it's good.
Absolutely, I do agree.
But we really want to make it something that our teachers can enjoy and take on board and do well.
I agree.
Because that's so important.
Right, correct.
Okay, Mr. Riffle.
I know, sorry. Why are we only adding three days? Like, would we not look at a fourth additional day? Like, what if we don't get all the instruction done?
We, I think we've made an analysis, and we feel that we can use three days well to, to get a lot of the work done. Plus, we have days throughout the year. And at the elementary level, they will also be focused on the same thing, literacy, math, social sciences, history, standards. So there's a plan already been developed, and this will really help us achieve that plan at elementary.
Okay.
Great. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ford. I will now move on to item 5.03, Review Adoption Recommendation for AP Chemistry Textbook and Textbook Materials.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Courtney Monpoint is going to introduce two items tonight. One is a recommendation for a chemistry textbook and textbook materials. And then that will be followed by a recommendation for American Sign Language textbook also. Thank you, Ms. Monpoint.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Tonight, I'll provide you with an overview of the AP Chemistry Textbook and Textbook Materials Adoption, process, and provide a recommendation from the Adoption Committee for the acquisition of instructional materials for advanced placement chemistry. In addition, I'll provide you with a brief update of the changes to the mathematics textbook adoption timeline. So sorry. Thank you so much, Dr. Keever. All right, the adoption of instructional materials for advanced placement chemistry aligns with Goal 1 and Goal 2 of the Strategic Plan, Academic Achievement, and College Career Readiness and Educational Equity. Having instructional materials that support 21st century learning and Virginia's profile of a graduate ensures that students and teachers have the appropriate resources aligned with the College Board standards and WJCC curriculum. It also includes in our goal to have high-quality instructional materials to support equitable access to instruction and resources that promote the success of all students. As advanced placement is a college board program that offers students the opportunity to take college-level courses while enrolled in high school, College Board provides a list of suggested textbooks for AP Chemistry. The publishers of each of these books provided us with copies of their books and access to their digital platforms and electronic versions of their textbooks. Copies of the books were made available for the public to view at the school board office for seven weeks and at an evening adoption fair held at James Blair Middle School on March 27th. The community was also provided access to the digital platforms and electronic textbooks through the Division website for seven weeks. A committee representing a variety of stakeholders was created per School Board Policy IIAA Textbook and Textbook Adoption and the Regulation IIAAR to review the books and other materials provided by each publisher. I am appreciative of all the work of the committee members and their colleagues. In addition, I would like to thank Dr. Daniel Cavassos for serving on the committee as our school board representative and our science coordinator, Ms. Jessica Gatto. Committee members and the community were asked to evaluate the textbooks and instructional materials considering criteria chosen under the four larger categories, which are found in IIAAR, as well as the VDOE's textbook quality assurance criteria for textbook approval process. The four criteria categories are content, such as graphics, organization, representation, and alignment to standards; resources, do the teacher's manual and supplementary materials support remediation or extension of learning; services, format, access, and duration of professional learning provided by the vendor to support implementation of textbook and related resources; and cost, how does the cost of the textbook align with the allocated budget? Responses were collected using Microsoft Forms from February 20th through April 15th, 2024. Committee met on April 23rd to review the evaluation data and discuss their thoughts. Committee met on April 23rd to review the evaluation data and discuss their thoughts on the books. The data allowed the committee to compare all three books. The discussion then centered on the organization of the content, accessibility and readability and the digital platform features. The committee discussed the pros and cons of each book and based on this discussion made a final selection. The committee voted unanimously to select AP Chemistry, Chemistry, the Central Science 15th Edition, AP Edition, copyright 2023, Savas Pearson. The committee offered these comments as their rationale for selecting this text, highlighting the robust digital platform and accessibility and the visually appealing, easy to read and logically organized physical textbook. In addition to bringing the recommendation to the board for AP Chemistry, I'm also sharing an update to our timeline for the adoption of mathematics textbooks. Once again, the VDOE has delayed adoption of recommended math textbooks with the adoption lists now becoming available for local review in January 2025. With the delay in their timeline comes a need for us to push back our timeline as well. The new timeline for the WJCC math textbook adoption process is February 25th, 2025 through April 2025. Moving forward, we will present recommended timelines to the board for textbook adoption. WJCC will adhere to the recommended timelines. However, in the event that the Virginia Department of Education updates their timeline with textbook adoption, WJCC will communicate a new textbook timeline with stakeholders that coincide with the access to recommended textbooks from the state. This will not require a new vote from the board as the process was previously approved. At this time, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Monpoint. Board members, any comments or questions? No? All right.
All right.
You're doing the next one as well.
I am.
All right, we can move on.
I will now provide you with an overview of the American Sign Language textbook adoption and textbook materials adoption processes and will provide a recommendation from the adoption committee for the acquisition of instructional materials for our American Sign Language courses. The adoption of instructional materials for ASL aligns with goal one and goal two of the strategic plan, academic achievement and college career readiness and educational equity. There are only a few publishers that produce comprehensive materials for high school ASL instructional programming. The publishers of the two sets of materials reviewed provided us with access to their digital platforms. Access to the digital materials was made available for the public to view online for four weeks and at an evening adoption fair held at James Blair Middle School on March 27th. A committee representing a variety of stakeholders was created to review the instructional materials provided by each publisher. I'm appreciative of all the work of the committee members and their colleagues. In addition, I'd like to thank Mrs. Kimberly Hunley for serving on the committee as our school board representative and our world languages coordinator, Dr. Pat Tillman. Committee members and the community were asked to evaluate the textbooks and instructional materials considering criteria chosen under four larger categories found in II AR, textbook and adoption, as well as the VDOE's textbook quality assurance criteria for textbook approval process. Evaluation responses were collected using Microsoft Forms from March 18th through April 15th, 2024. Respondents were encouraged but not required to evaluate a criteria if they did not feel qualified to do so. The committee met on April 16th to review the data and discuss their thoughts on the materials. The data allowed the committee to compare both product series. The discussion then centered on the organization of the content, accessibility and usability of the materials. The committee discussed the pros and cons of each option and based on this discussion made a final selection. Signing Naturally Units 1 through 6, Dawn Press, 2008. Signing Naturally Units 7 through 12, Dawn Press, 2014. Signing Naturally Level 2, Dawn Press, 1989. And Signing Naturally Level 3, Dawn Press, 2001. The committee voted unanimously to select the products by Dawn Press. Signing Naturally products are widely used at universities and high schools that offer sign language courses, are nationally recognized and are aligned with the American Council for Teachers of Foreign Languages and VDOE standards for ASL instruction. The committee offered these comments as their rationale for selecting this text, highlighting the strong alignment to the standards and user-friendly materials for teachers and students. At this time, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Board members, any questions on this one? I just have a quick question out of curiosity only. There were a lot of publishing years on those and is it just like 1989 has that not been updated since then? Or did we intentionally go for the old one?
No, they have not been updated since then.
Okay.
And as I shared that for ASL, there are not a lot of widely used programs and instructional materials for our ASL courses.
Okay, so those are just the latest from them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it?
Actually.
Mr. Riffle, go ahead.
When is ASL offered in our curriculum? Like what grade levels?
So right now it's offered for high school, so grades nine through 12.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's it, thank you. We will move on to item 5.05, review WJCC Family Life Education Community Involvement Team's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Otstad, who's been leading this committee over several years now, will be presenting an additional recommendation to the board this evening from the committee. Thank you, Mr. Otstad.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron and members of the board. The WJCC Family Life Community Involvement Team was officially formed in October of 2022. The existence of this team follows the Virginia Board of Education Guidelines for Family Life Education. The team currently has 19 members. The WJCC Family Life Community Involvement Team met three times in the 2324 school year on September 20th, January 17th and February 28th. The overarching goals for the committee are threefold. Identify needs to further promote community awareness and involvement with the WJCC Family Life Program. Review the alignment of existing instructional resources to the 2020 VDOE Family Life Standards of Learning and provide feedback for the communication plan for the family life curriculum and opt-out procedures. The committee wants to remind all parents and school board members that parents have the right to review the instructional materials either online or in person at their child's school as well as the right to opt their child out of part or all of family life instruction. Since August 21st, 70 unique individuals representing all 16 schools, including other members of our community who do not have a child currently enrolled in one of our schools, have accessed the WJCC Family Life Curriculum through the WJCC website. There have been 130 total entries, so there were multiple entries from the same individuals throughout the year to account for that difference. In addition to the curriculum access, parents can also find all opt-out forms and grade-specific parent resource guides to inform their decision-making process as a family. The division held four hybrid family life parent information sessions this year and total parent attendance was 12, including three in person and nine virtual attendees. On behalf of the Community Involvement Team, I am presenting one new school board recommendation for consideration. I'm having the same problem. The recommendation is that WJCC will teach all family life lessons in gender combined classes K-12. The anticipated implementation date would be the beginning of the 2425 school year. And I've provided the voting record. There were 10 members, out of 19, 10 members voted yes, five voted no, two recorded an abstention and then two did not provide a vote at all. Currently, WJCC has one 45-minute lesson in fourth grade on puberty, child abuse and neglect and one 45-minute lesson in fifth grade on puberty and the reproductive process instructed in a gender-separated environment. All other family life lessons K through 5 are taught in a gender combined setting. All family life instruction in grades 6 through 10 is gender combined and taught in the students' respective health classes. This recommendation would have all students receiving instruction together in their normal class groupings and align the practice division-wide K through 12. I've provided the standards on this next slide that are covered in grades 4 and 5 in those two 45-minute lessons. The National Association of School Psychologists 2021 Physician Statement of Comprehensive and Inclusive Sexuality Education supports that all children, including those representing all racial, ethnic backgrounds, genders, gender identities, sexual orientations, abilities and disabilities should have access to evidence-supported, comprehensive, developmentally appropriate, accurate and inclusive sexuality education. The NASP states that education should be non-stigmatizing and avoid assumptions of gender or sexuality. Furthermore, they state that inclusive sexuality education must involve nondiscriminatory practices that teach continuous consent, healthy behaviors, protection, prevention and education for all students. The reasons for combining gender, the Virginia State Standards all include specific language on both genders as a standard for all students. The instruction is non-stigmatizing. Students can develop empathy for the changes and challenges experienced by another gender and students practice communicating with each other about sensitive topics. And this is important when we're talking about developing skills as they grow in their relationships, friendships and further down with romantic relationships and so on and so forth. There are considerations for gender combined classes. The division can offer opportunities for gender split groups, i.e. a girls' chat or a boys' chat at lunch or small group work with the school nurse or other trained staff member. The division can offer instruction taught by both male and female educators to provide positive role models and reduce stigma. And many schools already do this, but allow students to ask questions they may not be comfortable asking in front of the class by using an anonymous question box. On behalf of the committee, I want to thank all parents for their continued involvement in their child's education. The cooperative efforts of the parents, schools and community will continue to enrich the learning and lives of all WJCC children. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Otstad. Are there any questions from board members? Mr. Riffle?
What resources are we saving by combining these classes? Like is that?
Resources wasn't a huge consideration in this recommendation. We want to provide the best education for all WJCC children. Certainly in terms of the logistics of providing the education, typically at the elementary level, the school nurse is the one that's providing the fourth grade lesson and the fifth grade lesson. And so they could go, in terms of when they teach the class, they could go into the individual classroom teacher's classroom and teach it at a variety of different times. Right now, when we split out, it's, we essentially have a day where we do it and we put all the boys in one section and all the girls in another section. And the school nurse could do it all by themselves theoretically if we did it this way. But that's, that's not a reason why we would do this.
I'd just be worried about like what, how much of their time is being used for this then? You know, if you, even if it's split, you know, it's just kind of gets into like more of what, like what is in their contract and stuff? And like even the suggestion from the committee to use lunchtime or something. It's like, I need the nurse to be a nurse again, you know, not teach family life. So I'm a little, that's just my apprehension with combining it. It's fine the way it is to an extent if there's not a real need to change the resource, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Any other comments or questions from board members? I'm seeing none. Can you just tell us again what you cited, national psychologist, what was it that you cited?
It's a 2021 physician statement from the National Association of School Psychologists.
Okay. But are we adhering to VDOE guidelines on announcing gender separated classes?
We are currently doing that, yes.
But would we, I mean, how would that happen if we didn't have any?
We wouldn't have to announce that it's gender separated. So at our secondary level, we're not separating gender. We don't make a specific announcement to the classes that we are separating gender. So that's only if you are separating the gender of a specific class, you make that.
So we don't have to notify people that we aren't separating?
No.
Okay. And what is, can you explain the impetus for the recommendation? Is this coming from parents? Is it coming from students?
This was generated from the committee. It's not coming from one specific person. This was an idea that was brought together as the committee had their discussions along the way. And this is coming from obviously a consensus of the committee.
Okay.
Just looking at your supporting research, I read the quote, but it doesn't say anything about combining or separating classes. And so I don't know how that supports your position.
What do you, Dr. Cavazos, what are you referring to?
This is supporting research, the National Association of School Psychology 2021 Physician Statement of Comprehensive and Inclusive Sexuality Education. I read the quote that you put in this document and I understand what it's saying, but that has nothing to do with separation or combination of genders in a class. So I don't understand how that supports it.
It's just supporting inclusive sexuality education.
Just education, but it doesn't say in the same room.
So would that refer more to the content perhaps, that it's, that everyone's learning the same thing? Which is also, that, that was a change that was made at the curriculum committee level, right? That curriculum would be the same across the board. Right, that had been not the case?
We would like for that to be the case. I would say that currently that's not happening at the elementary level. Currently, when we separate at the elementary level, the boys go with the boys group and they learn about boys puberty. They learn about, they do learn about the reproductive process in general in fifth grade. But in fourth and fifth grade puberty specific, they are only learning about their own bodies and the changes that are happening with their own bodies and the same with biological females. They are learning about the changes that happen with their bodies, but they're not learning about those that are happening with the other gender currently.
Right, but even if we were to leave it the way it is in terms of location, separating by classroom, you know, by gender in classrooms, is, it was my understanding that the content would, that would actually change, that the content would be taught to both groups, that they would receive the same content? Is that?
Well, we would love for that to happen, yes.
Okay.
Right now, the resources that we're using are gender specific in the fourth grade level. So we have videos that we are showing and the videos are, we have a boys' video and we have a girls' video. They do not address changes that happen with the opposite gender at this moment. So some of the resources that we're using would need to change if we made that change.
So, Mr. Otstad, the standard requires that boys and girls learn about each other as well as themselves, correct?
Correct.
It's not just a committee recommendation. It's not required, but that's what the standard actually delineates, which we don't do right now.
Correct.
Mrs. Donner?
And I think that lesson was just taught last week and I think it's really important to have the genders learning about each other from the conversations that I heard from some of the children in that age group. There was a lot of misconceptions about what happened to the other gender and just curiosity there. And so I think it's important that they understand both things because I think the misconceptions that I heard were pretty, I mean, they're only nine and 10 years old, but I mean, they were, it was pretty large mismatches of understanding like how these, how bodies develop from a puberty perspective, particularly with the fourth graders. So I would support having that.
It was my understanding though that we're not, that's not, we're not approving that piece of it, is that correct?
I'm just saying that I want.
No, I know, I'm not, I'm confused right now because I thought that that was already being, I thought that change was already decided and then it was up for board approval on whether they would be combined or not.
This recommendation is for the physical environment of who's receiving the instruction in a classroom.
Okay.
So just for clarity, the girls, what is the, what would be the problem with girls, learning about the girls and then being introduced to boys? And the same with boy, but not in the same classroom? I guess I'm just trying to figure out why there's.
There's not, there's no problem with that.
Oh, okay.
No.
Is that what was happening though? Is, didn't we already have that? So when the fourth grade girls were having their talk, they were never told what happens with boys?
That's correct.
Right, okay, why didn't?
It's just the way that the curriculum has been for a long time.
Okay.
So even if they're separated, they can learn?
Yes.
Both sexes?
Yeah.
Fine.
Right, okay.
Mr. Riffle, did you have another question?
Is this how we're like solving the problem with this, is combining it? Is that, that's just, that doesn't seem like the solution to?
If I might, it's not, this is not a solution to. Well, if, if, if I might, it's not, this is not a solution to, to that problem specifically. They're really two, they're related, but they are two separate things. Certainly, we can teach all the standards in their entirety while separating our students into two different genders. And that is certainly a compromise that the program, I think, would be benefiting from a great deal. This would, would be kind of an additional step in terms of who's in that class receiving instruction, whether or not students have to choose which class to go to. And so it's that non-stigmatizing piece that is really addressed with this specific recommendation so that no student has to feel like they may not belong in a certain class or they may not have to choose which class to go to or choose to opt out because they're not comfortable going to either one.
All right. Are there any other questions at this time for Mr. Rostat? It doesn't look like it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's, this is my, it's my turn. We are moving on to information and discussion items, item 6.01, Strategic Plan Update for Goals 2, 4 and 6.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased tonight to bring you an update on some of the strategic goals. There'll be several staff members moving in and out of the seats tonight as we present this information to you. And I think, Dr. Bright, are you starting off introducing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. Tonight, we're happy to share with the board updates from Strategic Goal 4, Safety and Security. I got it. Tonight, you will hear an update from key members of the Goal 4 team that will address areas ranging from network security to student health and wellness. Over the course of the presentation, you will notice a common theme of various departments working together to improve existing practices to promote a positive and safe learning environment for all staff and students within WJCC. There are six strategies identified within Goal 4, each with equal importance to promote safety and security for our staff and students. Due to the scope of Goal 4, we have segmented tonight's presentation into three categories. Technology and School Safety, Attendance and Discipline, and Division Supports. At the end of each segment, we will pause for questions. To begin our updates, we'll review the Technology and School Safety. At this time, I'll turn to Mr. Landers to discuss safety and security in the area of technology.
Good evening. Strategy 4 focuses on maintaining the availability, excuse me, and security of our networking devices. To ensure the reliability of our network, we monitor our bandwidth utilization as well as availability with the goal that the network should be available for use on a consistent basis. Our downtime this year has been limited to scheduled maintenance during off-hours. We also monitor the bandwidth utilization to ensure that our network does not become saturated and have maintained a consumption level below our target of 85% utilization. And I'm sorry, I thought the advance, but it had not. In the area of security, we monitor our firewall logs for threat indications and ensure that our firewall has all applicable updates and patches on an ongoing basis. This measure must always be 100% current and we also must ensure that our staff have the resources to keep on top of technological advances by taking advantage of professional development. Our goal is that each network staff attend at least two industry PD sessions per year. Security is also everyone's responsibility at some level as a single instance of falling for a phishing scam could introduce malware to our network. We continue to ask that all new hires complete a Safe Schools Module on email security. Our tools in partnership such as the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, as well as the Virginia Information Technologies Agency play a key role in keeping our network, in keeping our network staff current with notices of threats and trends in the cyber arena. The K-12 Cybersecurity Resource Center has indicated that phishing, ransomware and social engineering remain the top threats against K-12 education. We also scan incoming traffic to ensure that various attacks are caught prior to reaching the end user. Between direct attacks and email attacks, we have successfully blocked or avoided over 45,000 attempts against our network. Projects this year include upgrading the core network switches in each building. To date, we've completed seven of our buildings with the intent to complete all locations before the new school year. We also continue our partnership with James City County to upgrade fiber connections between all buildings to create more redundancy and failover capabilities within our network. We continue ongoing maintenance and analysis of our firewall, endpoint and email security, as well as taking advantage of partnerships previously mentioned to monitor our exposure to potential threats. Lastly, security of our data is critical as well. We work with all vendors that require any access to our student data to enforce the Student Data Privacy Agreement that is also supported by the Virginia Department of Education. Each agreement requires that the vendor meet protection criteria at either contract signing or contract renewal. Currently, 39 of our vendors have signed this agreement. I will now be followed by Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. In the spring of 2022, Williamsburg James City County Public Schools received the findings of our Threat Risk Vulnerability Assessment. That contained 70 recommendations. To date, we have addressed 30 of those recommendations and continue to move forward with the remainder. The next couple of slides are just a few items that have been addressed. 100% of classroom door locks have been upgraded. Classroom door window security coverings have been ordered and just arrived yesterday, actually. We have installed WJCC school property signs on 100% of school campuses. Six campuses have had new fencing installed. We are currently installing protective bollards on five of those school campuses as well. For the staff, we have purchased all school security officers' high-visibility uniform shirts and coats that identify them as security. We will continue the DCJS grant for our elementary school security officers this year. Procedurally, we have implemented the Rapid Emergency Management Platform that will allow us to track visitors, volunteers, drills, emergency response and accountability all in one location. We will be updating all school crisis plans this summer to reflect the standard response protocol that was implemented and used this school year, which allows common language during an emergency across all schools and with our first responders. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Weaver?
Or for Mr. Landers?
Or for Mr. Landers, I'm sorry.
Could you just explain for the viewing audience, the bollards? Because what do they really do? Somebody said that can't stop a car from going over top of it. So what do the bollards do?
It actually can't stop a car. It's rated to, those, those balls weigh 2,200 pounds apiece and are fixed on a pedestal. So if it's, if a car is moving at a pretty good clip of speed, it will stop it.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Riffle?
It's more of a comment, but no, no successful attacks is pretty, I think, at least you give me a pat on the back, it's pretty, pretty crazy. There are government agencies that attack like on the regular. Like even my, my, my work was attacked and there's four successful attempts, so. And that's, except, thank you, so much I'll do.
Thank you.
One more question for fencing. The fencing is not to stop people from getting out, it's for people coming in, correct?
It is, it is meant to be a visual reminder about our school campuses.
Okay.
We have seen quite a bit of a, of an increase of traffic, especially during our school day. We just, we, we want the public to understand that during the school day, we really only want them there if they have official business on the school property.
Some, yeah, I've heard that they were like, kids are skipping school and so the fences were, I was like, no. I'm, I'm just being honest. So in case somebody's watching, that's not the, the intent.
A lot of misconceptions in what, what is there for.
Okay, thank you.
Fencing is to, so that no one can say, I didn't know I was on school property. They can't be taking a walk with their dog and then end up on school property. That's the idea, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for either of our two presenters? Thank you both for all the tremendous work that you do on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Security is incredibly important.
Next, we turn our attention to the areas of attendance and discipline. These are areas that continue to be top priorities for WJCC. The following highlights the work to help promote attendance and provide a positive learning environment for all students. Addressing student attendance continues to be a point of emphasis for the school division. This emphasis is driven by our division data that reflects that the number of students missing 10% of more days enrolled has risen steadily since the 2018-2019 school year. However, this year, for the first time since the pandemic, we have started to trend downward and currently have 121 fewer students chronically absent this year than through the end of last year. 847 students currently have perfect attendance through the, throughout the school division, while another 6,511 students are considered to have no attendance concerns, meaning they've missed fewer than 5% of the total days of enrollment this school year. Of the 1,704 students who are currently considered chronically absent, only 890 students, or about 7.8% of the total student population, have met the threshold for being chronically absent for the entire school year. The rate of chronic absenteeism has also been far more stable this school year. The dotted green line seen on this graph represents the VDOE target for chronic absenteeism, which is 15% or less. The solid blue line, which represents the current school year, has been holding steadily, either slightly above or slightly below the target line this year. Compare that to last year, represented by the yellow line, which is at one point exceeded the cap, represented by the dotted red line, at which school divisions face additional scrutiny by the VDOE, before settling back down to a more reasonable 16.2% in the school year. Thanks to the hard work being done at our schools, as well as the support from students and parents alike, we have been able to avoid any large spikes in our chronic absenteeism rate this year. To manage our chronic absenteeism rate, every school in the division has been busy identifying students without risk attendance concerns and implementing individual interventions for support. As you can see, to date, there have been 1,492 attendance plans created, 850 attendance meetings and 158 referrals to the multidisciplinary attendance team, consisting of staff in the school division and several community agency partners to provide interventions to keep students out of the court system for truancy. Not seen in the chart here, there have been over 9,000 attendance letters mailed home this school year and countless phone calls checking on students who are absent. Compared to the previous school years, this shows an increased efforts in identifying and supporting, supporting students early on in their attendance. Attendance through the end of the third quarter has improved substantially over the same period last school year. The average daily attendance rate is the highest it's been since 2019-2020 and is resulting in more than 17,000, 17,000 fewer absences this year to date. At the division, we have started our efforts during the second semester last year by reviewing our current procedures and processes while developing new regulations to standardize our efforts across the division. New regulations include clearly defined excuse versus unexcused absences, formalized process for monitoring and addressing excessive absenteeism, and aligned attendance to course credit and grade level promotion. To support our schools in their ability to monitor attendance, we have worked with our student information system vendor to create reports that can assist our school teams with identifying attendance trends and monitoring students at risk in real time. Other interventions are geared towards supporting students at a more personal level, such as Claire Bird Baker, who paired students with adult mentors, Stonehouse Elementary, who started mentorship with the Job Corps volunteers, James Blair Middle, where they do weekly home visits and food drops that help offset barriers to attendance, and Lafayette High School, which started its RAMS reset program for students to recover misinstructional time. Each school in our division has made a concerted effort to address attendance by reducing or eliminating barriers. As we continue to see improvements in our overall student attendance and drops in our chronic absenteeism rate, we must continue to monitor and support our students to ensure that they're attending school on a regular basis. And at this time, we're happy to answer any questions you have regarding this update on attendance.
I have three questions. So with the 7% that are still chronic, is there a breakdown? I know this is probably a school board question and I can submit it. Is that elementary, middle, high? Is it more high school? That would be helpful for me, that's one question.
I don't have that data tonight, but I can, we can look into that.
Second question is, I know that the, that we were given money for the chronic absenteeism. So if we want to do tutorial programs for kids to recover some of those days? But are they met, let's say my child isn't coming and I can provide transportation for them to go, but my child doesn't want to go and I say, they're not going. Do we document that so that the state knows that we offered that for them to recover, but they did not take us up on it?
I'm just, you're referring to the all-in tutoring with the increased tutoring to reduce potentially absenteeism?
Well, I heard that you could recover.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that, that's been offered in terms of tracking at the elementary and secondary level, school-specific, I'm not sure. In terms of documented efforts to have them report to school and if they refuse, is that tracked? And I'm, I'm looking over to Dr. Worley and Mr. Walker.
And at the elementary level, we do keep records of that, of what we offer for students and families and if students are able to benefit from that or not.
If they do not report, it would not change the rate?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
In terms of documenting our efforts, I'm not sure reporting requirements at the state of, we've attempted X amount of students and however many percentage actually reported to school to receive that additional tutoring. I'm not sure that's a reporting measure at the state.
And the tutoring and attendance is different. I mean, so if you're absent, you're absent. It doesn't matter whether we try to get you to school or not, you're still considered absent and you're still counted as chronically absent. If you've missed a certain number of, of days, we can provide a remediation program to come in and offer that outside of normal school hours.
Right, right.
To make up that time. And I think each school is looking at students who may need that. Dr. Worley or Mr. Walker, if you would answer that one?
Yes, we're currently doing that and schools are tracking that individually. And of course, they're going to submit the data on the students that do come and they will have documentation of who they've reached out to, who's eligible. They might not be keeping that together, but it's easy, it's easy for them to access because they know who they're making the calls to and asking to come after school at the secondary level.
And we, the students that are elementary, do they have buses to? I know middle and high have an after-school bus, so if they wanted to stay, after they could. But elementary, it's the parent's responsibility to get them there, correct?
Now, a lot of the academic tutoring is happening during the school day for elementary as well, correct, Mr. Walker?
Correct, yes.
But attendance, if you're not at school, that time has to be made up in addition to your normal school time?
Yeah. I just feel like if they give us that opportunity and we have extended that and families aren't taking advantage of it, I know that's a ding against us, but it seems like to me there should be something that we, some documentation to say, yes, we could have recovered da-da-da-da, but they chose not to. So the kids that go to court, has that gone down, the number of kids that we have taken?
So I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Cassin here to help answer that question.
Quite the contrary, it's actually gone up. Last year, we did, we sent 51 kids to court services for the whole year. This year, we're trending closer to 70. We'll expect that to be even higher. Last year, we were only doing Tuesday afternoons. This year, we have all-day Monday. So they've, actually, the court service has worked with us to expand the number of hours that we're doing truancy cases.
So can't the court say, the state has given money, the school has a way for you to recover, you have to go?
He does. Judge Smalls, whenever we have a student and a parent there, and he reads the chins of the PPO, he tells them that it is your obligation to be and follow every intervention that the school proposes as part of the, what he gives them.
Thank you.
Mr. Riffle?
For the recovery dates, there's the graph slide. This is 1704. Will we have data that'll show like that trending down after the recovery period started? I know, I know we're already inside of that recovery period. I just want to know how effective the recovery days are as we move forward. Because I mean, the state spent money on it and we have to use those dollars that way. So I just, you know, I mean, we're going to have that data eventually. It's just me like in the future, will we have an update of like that charting downwards towards the end of the year?
The all-in money for absenteeism, we actually hired a person to, to follow up on students to help with this in particular. If you want to speak a little bit to that role, that would be helpful.
So at the secondary level, we have the SACS and the grad coaches who work with students and they continue a caseload for those who are.
So at the secondary level, we have the SACS and grad coaches who work with students, and they continue a caseload for those who are chronically truant. At the elementary, we didn't really have that position within the school, so we hired an attendance specialist who works with the nine schools and those students who are high flyers. He's currently carrying a caseload of thirty-seven students that he reaches out almost every single day, especially on days that they're absent. Goes out to the homes, checks on the students, works with community agencies to provide support. So he's been very active since he hit the ground running.
That doesn't answer my question still. I asked, will we, we're collecting this data and showing a chart we're downward into the next year? Now, when I see this report again in twenty twenty-five, I would like to see recovery actually being useful, not just us doing it, you know, so.
So you're talking the total number of students that are actually taking advantage of the three hours and the two hours?
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, it says totally chronically absent in that graph, and we should see next year, like, a dip down, like, around this time, you know, in the year. Because of the all-in.
The chart that you saw is our raw numbers. The dip that you see right now is our raw numbers before we've added in any of the, any recovery.
Can you say what slide you're referring to, Randy?
Sorry, I don't have a number. Set just back like one more at this one. I think, you know, we clearly see that the other graph shows us that we're doing well. It's just, we would like, you know, we still have a high number, even now, to twenty nineteen students. So I want to, you know, this recovery effort should kind of get us to a point where we're like getting into probably fourteen hundreds, right, like fifteen hundreds. I don't know what that would look like.
Well, I think the data point becomes available after we finish, we could provide an update on how many students benefited from the all-in tutoring and how that impacted attendance overall. So we could provide that to the board when available.
And that's what I mean, I said, like, in the future, I'd like to see separate data if possible, because it's important, but, yeah.
It's actually ongoing right now and hard to report on.
No, for sure. And that's what I mean. I know it's ongoing. It's me, like, when we see it again, like, this program, or we've, across the state are implementing, it's, everyone's doing this, and so how does it affect us, you know, statistically, so, thank you.
Mrs. Henley?
Very last question. Can we get in the future some data as to the ones that we never caught chronically? Was it because they were ill, maybe, or were they in the country? Or I would be interested to see the ones we really did not get, what was the reasoning?
We do have a percentage, I don't have the exact number, where right now we have students that are on a health plan that are being seen or treated for chronic absences, and those, although they're going to count against us just because that's the nature of the beast, we are familiar and we've working with them to make sure that they're still getting their education, even though they're not present in the school. I can give you what that number is with a health plan, but there's also a percentage of the population that is just truant, and that's where the court services has come in, and we've been trying very aggressively to get them into court and get them back into the building.
They're at work somewhere or just sitting home? That's important to me, to know what they're doing. Okay, that's what I was just thinking, in the future, there would just be helpful more information. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this? I guess my overall question would be, and I know that's the purpose of this update, but would we say that our new attendance policy that we implemented this year is having, you know, is it majorly successful? Is it, how would you rate the success of what we implemented? And are we targeting the right kids with that policy?
I think specific to the regulations, I think you're referring to, the updated regulations and the processes. You know, semester two, we're continuing to work through that and how that impacts the end of the year. I would, based on principal feedback, it has allowed increased communication and awareness, especially at the high school level, for parents to understand the importance of students coming to school, and even though they may be passing a course, the importance of regularly attending and not being chronically absent. In terms of end-of-year data to support, you know, the impact on overall students, we can have that available too. I feel like it's been effective. I feel like it's increased dialogue between the schools and the families about attendance. At the end of semester one, there was a lot of dialogues between families on semester two goals and kind of contingency plan supports to increase attendance, and feedback from high school principals specifically has been around the benefits of semester two and increased attendance from those students. So by that definition, I feel like it's been effective.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brown, and?
I do have one more.
Oh, Mr. Riffle?
We did hear from like multiple people from the public saying that some of our policies are, like, their students are doing well in class, and then we get to a point where they, I guess, have too many days off or unexcused and stuff. I know there's no regulations for us to amend those things, because it is a domino state, like, we kind of take what the state kind of provides to us, but what would be kind of, do we have feedback for the state, and is there any way that we can kind of be like, hey, we would like to see some of these changes, because some of our students, you know, are swimming or they're academically inclined, they're doing well, like, you know, when people are coming to cry to us about their kids, it's like, and we're just kind of not kind of talking back to them, it's kind of.
Riffle, we've constantly given feedback to the state on the definition of chronically absent, because there are some students who miss school through no fault of their own, through illness. There are times when a student is doing very well and is not in school. But as it stands right now, we keep saying redefine it. There doesn't seem to be any consensus or agreement to do that, so literally, if you're not in school, it counts against you. From what we've been used to over time, obviously. But we do believe, of course, that the best place for a student to be is in school.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are we, we're not done with the briefing?
I think we're moving on to discipline at this point in time.
I'm sorry, it's a, it's a goal four is a big goal. In the area of discipline, our work is constant, and we are committed to addressing the existing gaps. As we start our review of the discipline with WJCC, it's worth noting that we continue to see a large percentage of students who go throughout the school year without receiving a discipline referral. To be specific, ninety percent. Ninety percent of our students have not received a discipline referral for this school year. This is a data point to acknowledge and celebrate. Knowing that ninety percent of our students have gone through the school day without experiencing a discipline referral, our attention turns to the ten percent of students who have experienced at least one discipline referral. When analyzing the referrals that have been received, our goal is to look at the specific trends in their referring behaviors and overall incidents, identify areas of disproportionality, and determine supports and restorative measures that can be taken to meet the needs of all students within WJCC. The twenty-one-twenty-two school year was the first year of full implementation of the Student Behavior and Administrative Response, or more commonly referred to as SBAR. These are categories for tracking student behavior. These behavior categories and the types under each category have been developed by the Virginia Department of Education and prioritize responding to student behavior at an appropriate level of intervention, rather than simply giving a disciplinary consequence. There are six established categories that range from less serious to most serious. For example, behaviors that impede academic progress are considered under SBAR as a less serious category and could warrant a lesser administrative response, which is outlined in our Student Code of Conduct. An example of a response to a behavior that impedes academic progress could be an administrative conference with the student, completion of a behavioral reflection assignment, or established of a check-in and checkout process. However, behaviors that present a safety concern could warrant a higher administrative action that can include out-of-school suspension. For this school year, you will see that behaviors related to school operations continue to be our leading misbehavior category, followed closely by behaviors that present a safety concern. And in these categories, students demonstrate behaviors that tend to lack understanding and training in social awareness and decision-making skills. Provided to you this evening is a reference document that defines each behavioral category and common behaviors associated with each. The Department of Student Services monitors SBAR entries weekly to ensure accuracy in reporting. Additionally, training has been provided to school administrators on the SBAR categories and appropriate responses. Breaking down the previous slide's behavioral data even further, five behaviors represented over forty percent of the students' incidents for semester one of the school year. The top five are provided here. The top four behaviors remain consistent when compared to the previous school year. These include refusal to comply with staff, shoving, pushing, striking, biting with no visible injury, interfering with the learning in classroom, and students not going to class as assigned. It is worth noting that refusal to go to class or comply with staff is found more commonly at our secondary levels, while students at the elementary level often fall in the interfering of learning in the classroom and are the shoving and pushing category. WJCC continues to see disproportionate rates of suspension for specific subgroups, including black students and students with disabilities. These rates remain consistent from the previous school year and continue to be a top priority of our department. Specific to the subgroups, along with students who receive a discipline referral, WJCC aims to address the specific needs of these students while promoting a safe and learning environment for all students in attendance. The following slides will provide an overview of these efforts. Throughout the twenty-three-twenty-four school year, each school's MTSS, or Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Team, has supported student success through several actions. Teams have developed materials and trained faculty and staff to explicitly teach successful academic and behavioral skills. Classroom teachers have also received support to develop their plans to effectively redirect and reteach behaviors when students struggle. One area that's been a specific focus for many schools this year is celebrating student success in academics, behavior, and attendance. Already this year, schools have celebrated student success more than sixteen, with, excuse me, with more than sixteen thousand individual recognitions, more than six hundred class or grade-level celebrations, and more than forty whole-school events. All of these actions are designed to promote a positive and safe climate. Additionally, schools have implemented several interventions to provide additional instruction and support on successful behaviors and mental wellness needs. So far this year, more than three hundred students have been enrolled in behavior-focused Tier Two interventions, and over six hundred students have been served through school counseling small groups. Ensuring access to supports for students is a critical part of providing students with school-based resources, and this year, we see the school counselors are able to support students and their schools through seventy-nine percent of their time being spent in direct services at the elementary level, seventy-two percent at the middle school, and eighty-five percent at the high school. Other opportunities are provided through mentorship and support to students, and two examples of these are the Evolving Butterflies Group at James Blair Middle School and the Boys to Men Group at Jamestown High School. The Evolving Butterflies is established to help young ladies that promote acceptable interactions and improve communication skills while learning how to positively take accountability for their actions. Participants explore and understand their worth, as well as who they are in the world. Team building, self-esteem, mental state matters, I am enough, and building positive relationships are just a few of their topics. Programming includes developing youth leadership and focusing on positive relationships with peers and mentors. The Evolving Butterflies is made possible by the work of Sasha Robinson, WJCC Behavior Specialist, and Yvette Jackson, James Blair Middle School. Another example of mentorship includes the Boys to Men Group. At Jamestown High School, teachers expressed a concern for young men that were having challenges socially. Mr. Harrison, Jamestown High School staff member, and Johnny Underwood, WJCC Behavior Specialist, collaborated to identify an action plan. They examined school-wide discipline and attendance data in addition to recommendations from teachers and counselors. A few of the topics that have been, excuse me, a few of the topics that have been addressed include accountability, responsibility, self-perception, conflict resolution, and goal-setting. Additionally, these students review their transcripts to discuss their earned credits to make sure they're connected with their counselors for graduation track awareness. It is our goal to increase these mentorship opportunities throughout the division. Another focus and emphasis for us is the increase in access to non-traditional program offerings within the division. As we continue to see the areas of needs within our discipline data, it has been an emphasis within WJCC to increase access to non-traditional pathways for students who are experiencing challenges in the school building. One way in which we have increased access to non-traditional pathways has been the opening of the Refocus Program inside the Restorative Center. This year, the program has opened its doors to thirty-four students. Based on either parent and school referral or consideration of placement through the discipline process, the Refocus Program has provided increased supports and specialized programs that not only address academic needs, but also work with students on targeted behaviors that are impacting their success. During their time in the Refocus Program, students engage in self-reflection activities, track their academic and behavioral growth, and identify necessary supports. Of the thirty-four students, twelve are currently enrolled, fourteen have successfully integrated back into their home schools. When students are prepared to return to their home schools, support from the Restorative Center does not stop. Students continue to receive support from the staff at the Restorative Center to ensure that their needs are met in their comprehensive setting. Other students have chosen to exit from the Refocus Program and go to our Learning Lab and our online learning and our GED program and home-based instruction. The opening of the Refocus Program has provided thirty-four students access to additional programming not previously made available. Specific to our GED program, we have had thirty-eight students enrolled to date, with several more currently taking their entrance test, and of these thirty-eight, twenty-four students successfully completed their GED. We're anticipating that number to continue to rise by the end of the school year. Overall, a non-traditional pathway serves as a vital role within WJCC to address the needs of all students, and so far, in the Restorative Center, including GED and Learning Lab, has impacted more than a hundred students this school year. For the next school year, we continue to aim our expansion of non-traditional pathways and offerings within the Restorative Center. While there are areas to celebrate and highlight this evening regarding the area of discipline, there's continued need to provide supports to students who are receiving behavioral referrals. In addition to the efforts mentioned tonight, we also have specific areas of support that include reentry meetings for students returning from suspension. It is our goal to promote a safe learning environment for all, while identifying the necessary supports for students who are demonstrating behaviors that can lead to a referral. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in the area of discipline.
All right. Board members, Mrs. Henley?
So for the mentorships, are most of those in-house? Because sometimes, community members, like, I remember we used to have big brothers and big sisters, so there's a couple of students that probably need a good role model. Does that have to be, like, I know you'd have to get background checks and things like that. Is that why we don't have more mentorships in, because we have so many limitations for community, or?
I would say our goal is to increase our mentorships and increase our partnerships with the community members, so that is an emphasis to increase that. So there's, in our eyes, we're not going to look at ways to decrease mentorship opportunities. So if we have community members who come forward and offer potential mentorship opportunities, we would absolutely explore that, because as you stated, it's really important that the more role models they have, the better, so.
And then my second question. The hall, well, I don't know, that wasn't the way it was referred to. Students that don't go to class. Teachers, we call them the hall walkers. When they don't go to class, and just help me to understand, is a parent called to say, Johnny is walking, or he won't go to class? Or do we just let them meander and then just give them Fs? So I'm just curious.
I think you're probably mostly referring to middle and high school.
Yeah, high school, yeah, middle and high. Please help me to explain that.
I would say that the administrative teams at our secondary schools spend a lot of time redirecting people that are hall walkers, as you said, and redirecting them to the correct thing, and they absolutely reach out to families and follow a process of intervention. And a lot of it's visibility with all staff members, just redirecting, so that, and usually, each year, you can identify a small handful of students, it's usually anywhere from five to ten, for instance, in my experience at a high school that I'd be working with in one year, to redirect them. But yes, we redirect them back to class, that's the goal.
Are any of those eligible for the lab?
We evaluate those appropriately through Dr. Brown's office, but some will be eligible for it and some probably not, depending on their needs and goals and timeline where they are in their four years of high school.
Also important and an emphasis is the reasons why they're not going to class, and, you know, what is the reason for them not wanting to go to class? Obviously, if not completing the work, their grade is impacted, but that goes more to the identifying the reason, try to provide those increased levels of support to get them to class, or if there are other opportunities for them to be successful within their school day, and I think that, you know, every student is different in terms of what they need.
Mrs. Donner?
Yes, thank you for this report. I have a couple of questions. So as I'm looking, you know, I don't, I don't want us to gloss over the fact that, you know, when you look at black students and students with disabilities, there are huge gaps. And I appreciate a lot of the work that you've talked about that's focused on the students and helping them with their behaviors, but I didn't hear much about how we're helping teachers and administrators, because the referrals come from them, right, students do behavior, but on a spectrum of what one child is sent or receives a referral from for a behavior versus another, right? There's clearly some disparities here. And I think one question that I have is, have you cut the data by black students, students with disabilities? I know sometimes Hispanic students kind of fall in and out of this one as well. And have you cut the data by what they are being sent for? And if you have that, or what that looks like?
So I can, I can tell you percentage-wise, the overall school incidence. It's not going to answer your question that you're asking, but I think it's important. So for black- It's not going to answer your question that you're asking, but I think it's important is, so for black, for the total amount of incidents that we saw, um, to date this year, we have four thousand five hundred ninety-three referrals. It doesn't mean that's all equate to suspensions, but it is someone entered in a behavioral referral. So out of those, thirty-eight point five percent are black African-American, uh, thirty-four point six is white, seven, or sixteen percent is Hispanic, and then from there, it's a significant decrease. So I think what I believe you're asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is based on the referral, is there consistency in the type of discipline applied for the referring behavior? So if it's a hall walker, regardless of ethnicity, is it consistent in the application of the discipline? And there's no disparity on that side. I'm assuming that's what you're asking.
Yes, because when I look at, like, for instance, behavior, right? Refusal to comply with staff with operations of school, right? That's kind of a big catch-all, and that could be, you're, you know, doing things that you're not supposed to, or you want me to sit in my chair and I'm over here, and so go to the principal's office.
Right.
And so I think, so when I look at the categories with the largest, which to me can be subjective, so refusal to comply, interfering with learning in the classroom, like those two, which seem to be your, you know, your top, in the top three, I'd be curious as to like how often black kids are being sent for those versus the other kids because the data just doesn't align. If you have a school division, right? If you assume that all children basically do the same stuff, if you have a school division that only has twenty percent-ish black students, but they're overrepresented by thirty-eight percent, then there's, and that with white students being around the close to sixty percent, then they should have sixty percent of the discipline. And so I think that is the concern is, you know, what it, how are we applying these referrals? And are we applying them with equity across? And are we, and are we disciplining the same, are we disciplining the same people for the same, are we disciplining appropriately for all folks?
Right, and I I think there's a lot of different data points to to break down too. Is there a certain group of teachers who account for a large percentage of the referrals? By administrator, if they're processing the same referral, is the discipline going to be the same across that? Tonight, I don't have that specific data. However, I, that is continued focus. And I think the more important part too is as we meet with schools specifically about their own data, is to show them that data and and work alongside them to come up with what do they see in the data as well? Do they see inconsistency in how they're applying it? Do they see inconsistencies across the referring behavior and the administrator applying the discipline between the different, you know, a student with a disability compared to a general education student? So those are important conversations that we we have. In terms of the data I'm presenting tonight, we could look to drill down a little bit more to to provide that to you, to to provide an update to you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Dr. Cabasus?
Please, um, Mr. Zick, what's the budget for the Restorative Center?
That's a fantastic question.
Basically, the setup of the actual center was, I think we used end-of-year funds last year to do the physical setup. But the staff involved, we have, if Mr. Kess- Kessen is still there, we have four teachers, one administrator, one counselor.
Uh, dean of, yeah, dean of students, uh, school counselor. Well, the school counselor is already under the original funding, um, general operating due to the Learning Lab. So off of the grant, it's the four teachers, no, three of the teachers, this bet is off of regular funding, three of the teachers, and then the dean of students.
Right, so basically it comes down to to staffing because most of the resources are already there, but it's the staff to run the actual program. And we can give you a number based on those staff, and we can get that for you.
Yeah, I was just curious, so so then the follow-up question is, there seems to be a fair amount of resources devoted to this. So would you say it's a successful program, number one? And number two, do you see it as a future project?
Uh, yes to both. I think it's been a great success for the standpoint of, you know, we talked about the thirty-four students that were enrolled in Restorative Center. That's thirty-four students who, without the Restorative Center, even though it requires parent consent for them to be in the Restorative Center, they're typically students who have experienced suspension. So be, they didn't have the Restorative Center, it's likely they'd be on home-based instruction or serving, you know, a longer suspension. So I think also the success rate for, it gives them time to to identify what's what's happening in their comprehensive setting, the the specific follow-up from the Restorative Center where they check in, how's it going as you return to War Hill or Lafayette? Um, they've, those students have, for the most part, stayed in that setting once they return. So to me, that that's a pretty successful rate. And and our goal is to continue to increase those opportunities for non-traditional programming.
So those thirty-four students are quote-unquote rescued?
Eighty-two percent were able to transition back into their home school, which is very significant. We could have lost them completely had we not had this program to continue their education and really have them reflect on on some of the behaviors and get ready to move back into the comprehensive setting. And and there's room for more. We we need to expand and be able to reach more students to make them successful.
And I think it goes to Ms. Henley's point, to the hall walkers and talking about what supports they need. These are students who may have been hall walkers and may have been in the principal's office or admin officer counselor's office. There's reasons for that. This offers an opportunity to, and keep saying refocus, all, but it provides an opportunity to kind of just stop and take a deep breath and we'd look at the program we're offering for that student.
And that thirty-four number, it's gone up a little bit. When we pulled this data, it was on May first, and we've had, I think, the three or four students since then. So I think we're closer to thirty-eight students. And a lot of it, there's a rubric that we use. It's students getting multiple referrals over and over again for the same thing. And a lot of that is students who are refusing to go to class. So we have, we don't have all of them by any means, but we do have quite a few students that are there for avoiding class.
Mrs. Donner?
Uh, well, and I think to that question, when when we've had to cut the budget, one of the things that we cut out was the expansion of that part two of the center and being able to house those that are, um, on suspension. And so I think as we're looking at budget and going forward, if we're getting success there, I think that is a, an important next step in order to support our students.
Right. Additionally, I I would add, I think, that it also rel- relieves, at least temporarily, some of the, um, the disruption and burden on the, in-classroom teachers, which which alleviates a lot with, you know, in the school to have a specific place for those students to go, get their, get their needs met, get back on track and return. So it's, it's, we're not just affecting the thirty-four, thirty-eight students, but all the students that would have been in that classroom and their their teachers also. Is that a correct assumption?
I I think so. It provides everybody the opportunity to to move forward. And and I think, um, with Ms. Donner talking about the the reset program, that's offering opportunities for students on short-term suspension. And I, a parallel to that could be the attendance plans and monitoring that we're doing. Their early interventions are more on-the-spot interventions to address, okay, a student's been suspended. They could potentially go to that program. And there could be a debrief on what happened, what led to this, what what can we do to prevent this from happening moving forward and that reentry part of that? So that that will only improve our supports we provide to students.
And I think the, that, that ongoing support, we schedule it for six to eight weeks after a student completes their time. But we do have one young lady who was the first student to finish the program. We're almost at the end of the school year, and we're still supporting her every single week, um, just because she continues to need it. So that six to eight weeks is not set in stone. That's originally, we'll, we'll go six to eight weeks, and if we have to continue to support you beyond that, we will.
Any other questions or comments on this, um, specific section?
I'd like to, yes, continue on working with, um, doing, um, seminars and things for parents on the tobacco possession, use, distribution, vaping, electronic cigarettes because I think, um, some of that has a lot to affect some of our students' behavior. So if we can continue to monitor that and work on, uh, pulling that piece away, that would be great.
Just for a data point for you, and I know that it's not on the top five this year. I think it was like six or seven. So I don't want to give the impression that it's completely off the map, but it's not in the top five.
Okay, I think we are ready to continue.
I promise, this is the last. Uh, to wrap up tonight's Goal Four update, we turn our attention to division supports that include health services and student health and wellness. Virginia Department of Health tracks immunization enrollment data for all districts on the first day of school. In fall twenty-twenty-three in WJCC, one hundred percent of seventh and twelfth graders and ninety-eight percent of kindergarten students met the state of Virginia immunization enrollment requirements and attended the first day of school. Two percent of kindergarten students did not meet this requirement, and so their start of school was delayed. This accounted for seventeen students in the entire district. Students who did not meet these enrollment requirements were sent to community partners such as Old Town Medical Center, local pediatricians, and the Peninsula Health Department to get needed vaccinations to start school. To help eliminate kindergarten enrollment concerns, school nurses participated in the recent Family Fest for rising kindergarten families. Health Services is conducting immunization clinics at four schools this summer in collaboration with Old Town Medical Center at no cost to our WJCC families. WJCC has continued our commitment to health and wellness of students, staff, and families through through the School Health Initiative Program. Though, through wellness integration in the classroom, SHIP teaches, uh, teaches nutrition to all kindergarten through second grade and integrates physical activity and wellness activities in kindergarten through fifth-grade classrooms. The culinary and garden educators work with kindergarten through high school students utilizing school-based garden lessons, lessons integrated across the academic curriculum in supporting healthy cooking for life skills development. Our Challenge Club Program, excuse me, continues to grow. Clubs, including running club, martial arts, dance, sports, cooking, and gardening, teach lifelong healthy skills and build community helping, or build community helping students connect with their peers, teachers, and schools. This year, SHIP provided a hundred and clubs across our elementary and middle schools. We saw a nineteen percent increase in student participation and launched a new middle school cross-country running club with two hundred middle school students. Family engagement is a key component of SHIP. Our family cooking and gardening kits continue to be extremely popular and a wonderful way to extend learning into the home. This year, SHIP provided families with eight hundred and fifty kits with all the supplies and instruction needed for gardening at home and cooking challenges, encouraging families to cook locally grown produce together. SHIP is funded by a generous grant, and we thank our found, or funders, excuse me, the Williamsburg Health Foundation for helping us support lifelong health, wellness, and readiness to learn. Looking ahead, Goal Four will continue to serve as an integrated approach to the safety of our staff and students. We continue to enhance our school safety practices by implementing further supports from the Division Safety Recommendation Report, increase our offering of non-traditional programs, and capitalize on community partnerships to increase mentorships within the division and promote student and health wellness with our students through the SHIP participation in our upcoming immunization clinics. This concludes our presentation of Goal Four, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Mrs. Henley?
How much of the SHIP initiatives in the high school, do you know?
I'm gonna turn that over to our expert.
Thank you. Um, the SHIP program is focused primarily with our younger students because we know that the earlier we start teaching healthy behaviors, the more impactful it will be. However, we do work with our high school students, um, through programs like our Cooking Skill Program. We're in twenty-eight different classrooms across the school division, and that includes all of our high schools teaching healthy eating, healthy cooking, life skills development. So that would be one example of our work with high school students.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Riffel?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious about if we use, or how, like, for example, like, let's take Earth Day or something. Like, what type of programs do we implement that kind of, you know, do we do like a tree planting program? Like, I'm trying to think of it, other, there's only a couple of things listed, but.
I don't believe that's part of the SHIP initiative.
Well, I don't think it's SHIP, I, I was meant like, I'm sorry, I am like, well, I guess another question would be, are the garden kits like Virginia native stuff? Like, what type of gardening things are we providing to our students? Because does it, how aligned is it to?
Dr. Lazoff is coming back again. Maybe just hang out for a moment or two.
So our school gardens, um, vary considerably. Every school has a unique garden based on their location and expertise that includes some that are produce-focused and some that are native plant-focused. Um, our school garden kits are made to be windowsill gardening. Um, we know that many of our families don't have access to outdoor space and backyards, so the kits can be done in any setting on a windowsill. We even provide the dirt. Um, and they are, literally, we provide the dirt. Um, and those garden kits are focused on produce so that students can grow things, um, like tomatoes or peas that they then have the opportunity to eat. Um, so they're not necessarily native to Virginia, um, but they are things that grow successfully here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? There was a lot to take in, but we certainly, um, we know that safety and security is is at the top of everyone's priority list here. So I appreciate everything that goes into this and all the, all the multiple components, so thank you.
And now we're excited to tell you about a much shorter Goal Six. Uh, and I believe we've got Mr. Snipes and Mr. Lanners coming back up again, uh, just to very quickly go through some of the the focus areas here. And I don't know, Ms. Ewan, are you coming up as well? All right, team of three.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herring. We are pleased to provide you with our update to strategic plan Goal Six. Goal Six focuses on maximizing the division's.
We're gonna have a training on on the the clicker before the next board meeting because obviously it's it's very hard to to manage. Or else we'll buy a new clicker.
Pardon, pardon me. So Goal Six focuses on maximizing the division's available resources through efficient operations, streamlining processes, effective use of data, and alignment of our budget to the division priorities. For the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the Goal Six team focused on Strategy Four, which is to analyze and improve the effectiveness of business and operations processes. Under Strategy Four, areas of focus this year included an effort to reduce the downtime and potential loss of instructional time as a result of damaged or defective laptops. Our inventory does include spare or swapped devices for students to be able to return to class with an operational laptop. However, we are focusing on replenishing that inventory with returning devices from repair in a reasonable timeframe. We have established a target repair time of five days or less for every device taken for repairs to be returned to active status. This year, our average has met that target with the current rate of four point six days. We have also established a reliability metric to identify potential issues with a particular model or build of laptop. This allows us to identify potential trends or issues within our inventory and engage the manufacturer for support at an earlier rate. We have established ten percent of our inventory as a trigger for common failures to declare a trend and engage higher-level support. To date this year, we have not exceeded six percent with any particular model. An additional project was to improve the operations both within the HR department as well as the experience for applicants seeking positions within WJCC. To meet this need, the Power School Human Resources Management Suite was selected last year as our new management system. The suite of products includes an applicant tracking module for advertising and processing new candidate applications, the employee records module for processing and storing of digital applicant and active employee records, Smart Find Express for alerting substitute teachers of a need and securing coverage, the HR management module for providing our internal HR staff a more global view and management capability of our employee resources. Of note, prior to the system, we only had the applicant tracking and a separate sub-tracking system. On the screen are a couple of snapshots of the hiring manager screens with the lefts showing scheduled interviews for an open position from which the hiring manager can drill down to the applicant materials to include their application, resume, cover letter, and any additional details such as transcripts. On the right are all applicants listed for a particular opening which the manager can again drill down and select the potential candidate for further action such as interview or denial. Our goal this year was to implement the applicant tracking, records, and Smart Find modules with the HR management module coming later in the year. To date, we have completed applicant tracking, which has been live since January, and records which will be live this month. We are currently starting the implementation phase for Smart Find Express We are currently starting the implementation phase for Smart Find Express and expect it to be completed later in July. Looking ahead at next steps, HR management will begin implementation in August with target completion of November and the entire product suite is scheduled for completion by December. As part of the implementation process for the system, a cross-departmental team between HR, technology, principals and COA Center managers have been involved with setup, training and testing of the various modules. With this new capability, our applicants are able to complete a large part of onboarding before actually showing up for their first physical day with WJCC. Principals are able to follow candidate status from first day of application through interview and selection to offers being extended and accepted. Additionally, our substitute teachers will experience a much improved process of being notified and accepting substitute assignments via an app rather than having to log into a portal and search and accept. I will now be followed by Mr. Snipes.
Our Transportation Department drivers and aides were diligently to ensure students arrive safely, efficiently and on time to receive a quality educational experience. As of March 2024, we are a few percentages below our targets of ninety percent, eighty percent and ninety percent for Tier Two, Three and Tier Four respectively. On-time rates are impacted by numerous variables such as weather, accidents, construction, vacancies and breakdowns. To counteract those variables, we have adjusted tier times, moved schools between tiers, consolidated bus stops, created non-transportation zones and have contracted with a third-party vendor transportation for some of our most at-risk students. We do expect that our averages will meet their tier targets and are averaged by the end of the school year. Last but not least, I would like to acknowledge the efforts of the mechanics and office team who mirror the efforts of our aforementioned drivers and aides. Capital projects improve, excuse me, capital projects improve infrastructure and make significant long-term renewal improvements to existing facilities. Operations strives to ensure those funded projects are completed on time and that they do not exceed ten percent of the budget. Since 2022, projects have been completed on time and traditionally, six of seven projects, about eighty-seven percent of the projects, do not exceed ten percent of the budget. Ms. Yuanyu will now update the strategic plan initiatives for finance.
A focus in the finance area this year was to implement electronic or ACH vendor payments. By paying vendors electronically, it will reduce the opportunity for the division to be exposed to check fraud, allow vendors to receive their funds quicker and save the division time and money. Our goal for the current year was to pilot the process with a small group of vendors that we pay monthly. In March, we identified this group of vendors and developed a payment advice form that will be emailed to vendors once we process a payment. In April, we sent communication to the pilot group and signup forms, and as of last week, we've received fourteen responses or fifty-six percent of our pilot group have elected electronic payment. We plan to begin paying this group via electronic payment in June. And looking ahead, we will identify our next target group of vendors this summer to send communication out to. And this completes our updates on Goal Six, and we will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Those fourteen vendors that accepted, how much of the budget do you pay? How much does the total payout? How much do they represent? You know what I'm trying to ask?
For that particular group of vendors, we pay about eighteen hundred dollars a month to this, it's a small group that we...
Any other questions from Ms. Yuanyu or Mr. Snipes? Or Mr. Landers? Still here? No?
Oh, wait, I do.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Riffle.
What is Tier Two, Three and Four?
Tier Two, elementary school, Tier Two, excuse me, middle school, Tier Two, elementary school is on Tier Three. Middle school is on Tier Two, elementary school is on Tier Three, and the second set of elementary schools are on Tier Four. Tier One, we expect to be a hundred percent because they're our first schools.
It's start times.
They're start times.
Sure. So like route times?
It's start times.
Okay, understand.
Anything else before we move on? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know what my problem is. I just keep waiting for the next person to start talking. I apologize. All right, we're moving on to policies. We have handful to discuss. Moving on to seven point zero one, review revisions to policy I G A D, Career and Technical Education.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. I did not want to be too presumptuous and just...
No, I'm sorry.
It is rolling this evening. First one is I G A D, as Ms. Ordigo mentioned. It is career and technical education. In this particular policy revision that we're bringing forward this evening, we are recommending that the language that has typically been in the regulation be shifted into the policy, which we feel like is a more effective place for that information to be included and more closely aligned with the V S B A model policy. The other language that is included or the edits that were made are cosmetic in nature. We also updated a code reference.
Thank you, Dr. Kever. Are there any questions from the board on this one? Mr. Riffle?
I should probably get the line one up first, sorry. Just looking at number, line twenty-eight, it says we'll look to do partnerships. What, like, is there like things that like, I guess in the past that we haven't been able to do because of our code sections? Or I just, for clarifying that particularly?
I don't believe so, Mr. Riffle. I think that it is permissive language that indicates that we are able to establish those partnerships and we are... The code itself indicates that and gives the board permission to do so.
Thank you.
Anything else? It doesn't appear so, so are we ready to move on to the next policy? We will move on to seven point zero two, review revisions to policy I K F, Graduation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This particular policy was last revised in November of two thousand and four. The revisions that we're bringing forward this evening are to help this policy be closer aligned with the V S B A model policy. As an example of such, our policy had been titled graduation. The more appropriate title for this policy is the Virginia Assessment Program and Graduation Requirements. The policy itself details what the requirements are for students in order to be able to qualify for graduation, outlining information related to SOL tests, et cetera. We have included specific information in lines eighteen through thirty-three indicating that children of certain federal employees have some opportunity for courses, et cetera, to be waived based on moving into a school district or out of a school district relative to certain times. The last piece that I want to mention is that we have added lines, or lines one forty-two through one forty-four, are to clarify the expectation for a student's participation in graduation. There from time to time have been some questions about whether a student who may not be in good standing, i.e. based on a specific disciplinary issue, as to whether or not he or she could participate in graduation. We feel it's important that that information be included in this policy as well.
Thank you, Dr. Kever. Looking around for questions from the board?
The last part is that the one forty-one to one forty-four, is that not described by? Is that just something we're adding ourselves or is that something that's like suggested to us by?
Line one forty-one and one forty-two, not in green. Is that what you're asking?
Oh, in green.
In green. That is something that we are adding. We are adding that to our policy because we feel like that's an important component for community members to know that participation in graduation is not required. That we want you to participate in graduation, but if there is some reason that you have chosen not to follow the Code of Student Conduct to a degree, we can preclude you from that.
The student can still graduate. They just cannot...
The student will still earn a diploma as long as he or she has met the requirements, but as far as actual participation in the ceremony, that maybe will help.
Yep, okay. Anything else? Looks like we are ready to move on. Seven zero three, review revisions to policy J F C, Student Conduct.
Yes, ma'am. This policy is coming before you this evening as we bring this policy generally in front of you on an annual basis. And typically, we have corresponded the review of this policy to bringing forward the Code of Student Conduct. We felt like it was important to talk about the Student Conduct Policy, J F C, and then we'll bring to the board as we get into the month of June, the Code of Student Conduct. This particular policy details specific items that you will find in the Code of Student Conduct when you review it. Those items which, if a student were to engage in such conduct as listed in policy J F C, would likely necessitate some type of disciplinary consequence. There are a few changes that we want to mention. We've added some language on line thirteen and fourteen indicating that the items in this policy are prohibited and that students may be subject or are subject to disciplinary consequences should they engage in those activities. We removed some language from two nineteen to two fifty-seven. Those are the lines that I'm speaking of related to gang activity. There was very specific information in our policy related to gang activity and the fact that that's prohibited. We actually, as a school division, have a policy on gang activity and felt like a reference to the fact that A, participation in gang activity is prohibited and that we will be following our policy that is called gang activity or association. So we made some revisions there. And updated language on lines three thirty-three and three thirty-seven, talking about and clarifying that trespassing on school property or providing someone entrance into the school, that that person is unauthorized is also subject to disciplinary action. I want to mention that those items that are mentioned in line three thirty-three to three thirty-seven is actually something that was specifically referenced for us in the T R V relative to gaining access to a building by a student perhaps opening a door for a colleague or friend or something along those lines. It's an important thing that we need to be aware of.
And just to clarify, the T R V is the threat risk?
Yeah, the Threat Risk Vulnerability Assessment, I'm sorry.
Just for new people. Okay. Are those the?
Those are the, those are the bulk of the changes.
Any questions or concerns from board members on this one? Dr. Cavazos?
Kind of silly question, but is there any allowance in here for, to discuss like public gatherings for particular politicking or that sort of stuff? You know what I'm talking about?
I do know what you're talking about. I think Dr. Cavazos that we have two other policies that deal with political activity. One, that we just recently revised dealing with staff members and understanding a staff member's responsibility relative to political activity and then in general, a political activity policy.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so this doesn't specifically talk about that?
No, sir.
You have different policies?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else from around the room? Okay. Move on to item seven point zero four, review creation of policy J G D A.
Yes, ma'am. Typically, because we want to ensure that we're within the five-year cycle of review, you will not find us bringing new policies forward to the board and adding to your plate of the review cycle. However, in this case, we feel like adding policy J G D A is appropriate. This speaks of the process by which students with disabilities fall under the Code of Student Conduct and are disciplined. The language that you see in front of you from lines four through wherever the policy finishes up have typically been included in our Code of Student Conduct. That information is in there now if you were to look in our Code of Student Conduct. We feel like there needs to be a standalone policy that really demonstrates to parents with students who have disabilities what that discipline process is. This is something frankly that members of our community have asked for previously, and I believe the CAC team has reviewed that recently as well in one of their meetings and something that they support. So we believe that we should add this to our policy manual.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Nope. Okay. Taking that as a move on. Item seven point zero five, review, another creation of a policy J G D B.
Yes, ma'am. It falls into a very similar category to the one that I just described. It is not a policy that we have currently had in our policy manual, but it is related to the practice and procedures that we follow as a school division and believe that it is appropriate to add this as a policy.
Bruce, Mr. Hosang?
Is there an issue why this cannot be incorporated into the previous policy and it has to be a standalone?
That's a good question, Mr. Hosang. Let me see if Dr. Brown...
V S B A has it as a separate policy. I think what's unique about this one is J G D A goes over specific protections under I D E A. What's unique about J G D B is it's almost a standalone regulation that we followed to this point. And so I think allowing this to be separate to understand that in addition to protections, there are times where students with disabilities may not, as a school division, we may not be required to go through what's called a manifestation review and do an alternate placement. And it's a very specific standalone regulation around that that I think is important to bring forward to the community and to the families.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Hosang?
Yes.
Mr. Riffle?
Just wanted to clarify, like line six, it says, I just maybe just, I'm not very particularly, I don't have know enough about this area policy, but when do parents get notified in this process? It says you can be removed without parental consent. Then there's a forty-five day, you know?
I've never had to in my career enact this, but if that were to occur, it would occur through a parent notification, an I E P meeting, and what's called a prior written notice was to review the division's proposal and implementation of this, of this policy.
So that there will be notification?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? I think we have one more?
Yes, that is correct. The last one is J G D and J G E Due Process Safeguards. This was last reviewed in June of two thousand and eighteen. The line four, we changed the name of the policy to Student Suspension and Expulsion, which outlines the process and the language related to suspensions and expulsions. There was a redundant statement removed from line one sixty-two and one sixty-three, and we've also added information about alternative education program procedures to this policy.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kever. Any questions? Does not appear so, so I think we're good with this as well. It's, these policies will then appear on a consent agenda, is that correct? If there's no objection, and the proposed agenda items in five will be individual items, is that correct?
That's correct. The proposed items will be individual.
Okay, so all those things in five will be individual votes and these policies will all appear on a consent agenda? As long as everyone's okay with that? Looks good. Okay, thank you. We will move on to action items, our one and only tonight, eight point zero one, Approval of Personnel Actions. Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
All right, almost there. Board member comments. Can I start with you, Dr. Cavazos?
I had a wonderful visit to Jamestown High School and I met a brilliant, really instructive gentleman by the name of Mr. Townsend. I was really impressed by the fact that he took the SOL reading scores and divided it into the particular tasks of each of those test scores in the... of each of those test scores and they gave percentages to all of those and, um, I don't, I'm not happy that he agreed with me, but he at least saw the fact that illiteracy is, is still a problem even at a high school level. But he was really, um, innovative in how he identified the specific parts of the illiteracy that needed to be taught and I was really fascinated by the fact that he did that.
Thank you, Dr. Kavazos. Ms. Chen?
Um, I have, um, I've enjoyed a lot of different events and it's been really, it's a really exciting time. The, um, the musicals at Lafayette and War Hill High School. Mr. Hosang and I did a, did a visit to, um, B B, um, Elementary School, which was lovely. But, uh, tonight I'll just speak more specifically about one particular event, the, um, celebration of our uh, support staff, our support teachers and staff. It was just great to meet and, um, congratulate, uh, library aides, teacher assistants, special ed aides, um, registrars, our cafeteria managers, bus drivers, um, and to hear from the principals and the senior staff there, um, just sort of all of the amazing work and how they're going above and beyond. So I think that was one of the highlights, um, out of the many events that we've attended, um, over the last few weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Mr. Riffle?
I'll be brief, um, I attended many events since we have kind of a time off here. Did the school plays, did all three, yeah, it's pretty, you know, me and Miss, I think me and Miss Hunley done ones, done all three, so. Maybe you have, but they were amazing. I think our students, uh, always impressed us with, um, just how they get into the arts and they can like find their passions for, um, talents like that. I, I also had the privilege of attending the support staff recognition, which was great. It was, it was, I mean, something I'd never really thought about when I was in school. Um, just how many people, um, impact students like that and to hear from principals to talk about their individual staffer and and that's really more representation of their whole school, like the, how their whole staff is and then so, I think it was just, it was just great to see. Um, and then I attended the kindergarten registration, that was really awesome and I know, um, there are administrators and people who facilitated it. It was kind of a half day or like a day off for, you know, from student instruction, but they still came out and, you know, acted and it was, it was more to see like it's on a Friday, it's on a weekend, like this is, you know, it's the first time they did it and it was a great success. So I, I would just thank everyone who attended, you know, whether you're registering people for kindergarten or just a community member, those, those events were supportive. Um, I also went to the strawberry festival, which was really cool, um, Ms. Aller and is, you know, I didn't know she was the treasurer of the P T A, so. She's, she wears many hats, but I, I think it's, you can just say it's like, there's a lot of care for our division and the things that we do, um, across, uh, for our students, so. Yeah, this, I'm excited for the, all the other activities we have planned. I think it's like every day almost in, into the, you know, the next month, so. Um, hope to see people there and to celebrate our students and staff and, and the success we have in our division, so.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mr. Hosang?
Yes, uh, I first want to, uh, uh, thank, uh, our teachers and recognize our, uh, W J C C teachers during Teachers Appreciation Week. Um, thank them for everything that they do. Uh, in the army, we had a, a saying that the N C Os and non-commissioned officers were the backbone of the army and the teachers are clearly the backbone of what we do here. Uh, so I just wanted to definitely thank them for everything that they do, uh, throughout the year. Um, again, like Ms. Chen stated, we visited, uh, Jay Blaine, uh, Blatton Elementary School, so I want to thank, uh, Dr. Schweitzer uh, for showing us around and, and showing us, uh, the, the different classrooms, uh, and the, the different students and, uh, meeting the different teachers there. Um, I just want to quickly, uh, touch base on an S B Q that was, uh, recently provided to us and I guess ask some follow-up questions, uh, based on that. The information we've received between the, and S B Q and then also in emails that we currently have nine hundred and fifty-seven E S L students um, in our school division. I'm just curious as to getting a, a, a percentage of the enrollment of that, cause the, the documentation that we have was based on figures that we received or that, of, of the numbers that, of the E S L students from the beginning of the school year, um, which was eight eighty. Um, so I'm just curious as to what this, the current percentage of the enrollment for E S L students with the nine fifty-seven. Also curious regarding the number of the E S L students and the percentage of who have scored above the four point four and I'm not sure how you pronounce it, the W I D A, evaluation or assessment. And who are within the four-year monitoring period, how many students that we have in that program or in, in that area at this point. And also the number of students and the percentage of former E S L students who have completed the four years of monitoring. How many students do we have that have completed that, that process? Since we've had an, an increase in the number of students throughout the school year, uh, E S L students, uh, and the, and the percentage change, uh, for that. Just curious as to what is the number of students and the percentage of, of change for the non-E S L students or the English-speaking students. Um, we received a, a chart from, showing numbers for E S L students from two thousand eighteen to two thousand, two thou- or from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen through the present, so I'm just curious as to the numbers of non-E S L students for that, uh, same timeframe to see what the, the status is of the, the numbers, uh, changes and the percentage of changes. We had a, a chart breaking down the number of E S L students for each of the schools. And, and my, I would like to see if there's a way that we could um, break that down for each school, for each grade, um, and the number of students in each of those grades. And the amount of time that it takes for those students to receive a four point four composite score, um, on, on the, uh, the W I D A test. Um, and if there's any factors that the teachers or the administration has as to why students are moving either quickly through, not moving quickly through, if there's anything that you, that, that the administration can, uh, provide to us um, as a background for that. The final, uh, chart that we had shows the number of minutes per week that, um, L I E P teachers, um, uh, are able to spend with, uh, students. And it's broken down to level one, level two, level three, level four, um, E S L students. And there is something in the, uh, S B Q that talked about the S, or the level one, level two, or the more serious issues that we have with the students or the, the ones that needed, uh, additional, um, work. And for grades five through twelve, there, um, there's a breakdown of basically three hundred minutes per week um, that the L I E P teacher spends with each of those students. So that breaks down to about sixty minutes a day. And so I just, I, I'm just, I'm curious as to I guess what we're doing for the other five to six hours during the day with those students and what kind of, um, assistance they're getting. I understand teachers are, are working the best they can, the, the ones that are not the L I E P, um, uh, instructors. But what are, what guidance or what, uh, additional assistance are we giving the teachers during that additional five to six hours a day that those students, um, do not have the, the assistance of an, uh, L I E P teacher? Um, that, that we can provide for those students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mrs. Hunley?
Okay. Um, I thought March was very busy, April was very busy as well. I have about fifteen things and I'll give you the top ten. Visiting Lafayette High School with Mr. Kavazos. There was a, a quote I liked in Mr. Rice's office. It says, "Success is not final, failure is not fatal. It is the courage to continue that counts." And, um, I thought that was a very poignant, um, quote. I was able to go to a sign language class, which was great because I was on the sign language adoption committee. And, um, to be able to, uh, see students signing and, um, they taught me some signs, so that was helpful. Because I signed up for the course, but it was too, they had a free course, it was too overwhelming, so I had the children just show me basic sign for. Um, I enjoy serving on the school board. And children, there you go. So then Ms. Donner and I went to Matoka, to the Wax Museum. And I'm gonna let her talk about that, it was awesome because I don't want to hog all the stuff. It was interesting too, I went to the library and I didn't know we had such a large group of deaf and hard-of-hearing families. Because one of the adoption, um, books said that the kids had to immer- immerse in this culture and I was like, do we even have that culture of people? And we do. And so that just was like a, a little wink for me. And Mr. Riffle and I went to P Town, which is Portsmouth, and, um, for our regional forum. And we were able to get a winner. One of our third grade students artwork was, um, was, uh, she got third place, so that was great. And then, um, all the plays were just awesome. I have to give it to Toano, the Aladdin Junior, the, the costumes, the choreography, the lighting, special effects, food, stage, um, props, um, seating, we had, you know, roped-off seating for school board, so. Um, I'm just always amazed with our fine arts program. I liked with most of the plays, the themes, I always read about the themes and, um, definitely for, for the, um, Crazy for You and, um, I can't remember the other one, but one of the things was we rely so much on social media um, for judging how we feel and how we portray ourselves to people. And we should just be concerned with what's on the inside and not always what's on the outside. And the fact that, um, Ms., um, McCory waited twelve years to find the right cast for the Crazy for You just helped me to realize sometimes good things come to those that wait. And then at War Hill, we had a mock trial, um, in Ms. Boyd's class. And, uh, it, it was bigger than last year. Last year we were in a small room, this time we were in the library. And, um, just to, uh, you would have thought you were in a real courtroom. One of the young ladies, I said, if she doesn't go into the, as a defense attorney, I don't know, because she worked that role. And, um, I just think it's important, you know, we, we could do ninety-nine things right, we're always going to hear about the one thing that we have not done right. But, uh, it's my main role as I sit here to let the viewing audience or parent, parents who don't get into schools, um, don't always have their kids come home and tell them all the wonderful things happening. We have a lot of great things happening in our schools, so, um, and I want that to be celebrated always. It, it, and we have Asian-American Pacific Island History Month, teachers appreciation, nurse appreciation. We just need to celebrate more and, um, judge less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you. Uh, as some of my colleagues are hanging out with the big kids, I've been hanging out with the little kids for the last month, so. Enjoyed the Matoka Wax Museum, had a wonderful opportunity for the fourth graders to, they all got to adopt a historical figure and learn about them and they dressed up as those historical figures. I learned a ton from that. And then Matthew Whaley hosted a, a Virginia History Night, so each of the children chose, uh, either the Rafferty School, the Bray School, or Matthew Whaley and did history on them. And I think what was amazing was they, some of them did replicas. And so if you think your children are doing Minecraft and they're not actually learning something, there were so many children who had Minecraft replicas of one of those three schools. And some kids went old school with a diorama or with Legos. Uh, but that was just amazing to see. Had the opportunity to go with Ms. Ordigo to James River, I'll let her talk about that one, so she's got something. Uh, and then also went to the forty, we gotta spread them around. The Forty-Fifth Annual Strawberry Festival at Matthew Whaley, which was amazing and just, I think as you are out there on that playground and you're seeing these I mean, it is a microcosm of our world. There are children and parents and families from all around the world, children playing together, enjoying each other. Uh, it was the most, it was the largest soccer game I'd ever seen. I think there are about forty or fifty kids playing soccer. I didn't want to see it, cause I thought that was like a liability, but I'm just gonna not look that way. But, um, it was wonderful. And then also for the ship program, uh, on the closing, they had, uh, a parents versus kids kickball game that I got to participate in, um, which was very competitive, so, and luckily no adults got hurt. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner, and thank you for leaving some events for me. I appreciate it, yes. Uh, Mrs. Donner and I had a wonderful visit with, um, Ms. Washington at, um, James River Elementary School. And just got to view so many wonderful classrooms, great, um, learning interaction. There was, we spent one significant time in one classroom with, um, someone reading a, a book to the kids about, um, showing life-size animal parts, you know, it was a giant book and you could see what it, what a, you know, gorilla hand, you know, the real size or a, a tiny butterfly or. Um, but we just watched her engage with so many different children that needed different interaction at the same time and it was seamless, even though we could see that she was doing different things for different kids at the same time. And so I was just pretty much in awe of that and, and I, I was engaged in that. I didn't want to leave, cause I was like, I want to see the rest of the book, so. She managed to engage me, um, and, uh, there's just a lot of, um, a lot of really wonderful things happening at James River. There's also a lot of need, a lot of, um, you know, stories that we, we heard a few that, that were just, um, that you don't think, you don't think that that's what's going on in some of these kids' lives. Um, and so the fact that we have such dedicated teachers and staff and administrators at that school. Um, I know at all of our schools, but I'm talking specifically about that one that, um, they're, are there because they truly genuinely care about every child and, um, are willing to meet some pretty significant needs. Um, so it was, it was a lovely visit. Um, I also went to the Wax Museum, this is something I forgot, but you've been posting a picture of my.
Too much in my head, I'm sorry.
I'm kidding, that was phenomenal. I, um, I love history, I love history presentations. I have, I had never seen it done that way. Um, and some kids were, were really into being the wax figure until you hit their pretend button and then they came to life and that, that was really incredible, so if you ever get a chance, um, for, I think it's the fourth grade, right, so, um, that's an awesome event. Um, I know we, uh, talk a lot about the high school productions and middle school productions. I got a chance, um, to see a, a elementary school production, cause my daughter's best friend was in a Hundred and One Dalmatians at D J Montague and so that was, that was incredibly cute and so well done. And when you, when you realize that these are, you know, elementary kids, I know it's incredible what high school kids can do and it's, it still blows your mind, but these are elementary school kids and they were also totally amazing. Um, and that was led by, of course, our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Ray Pash. Um, so that brings me, I was also going to mention like, um, Ms. Chen and Mr. Riffle mentioned, the Support Employee Brunch that we just had this, um, couple days ago. And I was really struck by some of the stories. We, each, um, each school had a support employee who was, who won the award and their principal stood up and said something about them or explained their role or why they were, um, chosen. And I was just so inspired by some of the things, some of the stories we heard. Um, these are people that are not, not looking for recognition, they're not looking to win an award, they are, they are, the things that they're doing is who they are. They're not trying to, to be anything, um, beyond that, but it's just who they are. And it's just really encouraging, um, to know that, uh, just inspiring to hear little, little gestures or the, or big gestures or just consistent gestures that truly make a difference in an organization. And I'm so glad that we, um, I'm so glad we highlight that. I think that was an initiative that Dr. Herron brought and I think that that's, it's really wonderful thing that, um, our school division does and I'm so glad we do it. And, um, looking forward to Teacher of the Year presentation tomorrow night, um, for the same reason. Um, and of course, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so we do hope that all of our teachers and nurses know how incredibly appreciated they are. Um, obviously, none, none of this happens without, without our teachers and, um, so we, we look forward to celebrating them tomorrow night, the Teachers of the Year, and we'll probably have more to talk about after that. That is all I have for tonight. Sorry, I lost my place. Um, just read some upcoming events. Career Ready Advisory Committee will meet on May eighth at three thirty here in room three hundred of the annex. Like I mentioned, Teacher of the Year Celebration is, um, also, sorry, May fif- May eighth tomorrow at five P M at the Henage Auditorium, uh, at the Art Museums of Colonial Williamsburg. I think, I think we'll all be there. I guess everybody. Um, Special Education Advisory Committee meets on May ninth at six thirty P M here in room three hundred of the annex. And Policy Committee meets on May fifteenth at eight thirty A M in room two oh three of the school board and central office. Our upcoming meetings, we will have a closed session on May twenty-first that starts at five forty-five here in room three hundred of the Annex, followed by our regular meeting on the same day, May twenty-first, six thirty PM over in the James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. And for the month of June, we have a closed session starting on June fourth at four PM here in room three hundred of the Annex, followed by work session and action items, also June fourth, four thirty PM in the same room, room three hundred, the Annex. And our agenda items are set for the next regular meeting because we all said, we agreed. And so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.